Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank the candidates for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting about 30 minutes. Responses will not be timed and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to about five questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered or that they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Charlie Bletzer, who's one of the four candidates in the special election for the Select Board. Welcome, Charlie.
Thanks, Julie. Thank you for inviting me.
Well, great to have you. I'm glad that all four candidates could do this.
My pleasure.
We're gonna start with a couple of questions and then we'll just have a back-and-forth on it. What is your motivation for running for this position right now? Especially given the fact that you're gonna have to rerun again if you win in the spring? And also, you're running for the position of a Select Board member. In your opinion, or in your view, what is exactly the job of a Select Board member?
Okay.
So it's a double-edged sword there.
Okay. My motivation for running really was, I think a Select Board position is so important. And, you know, I've been involved in politics and local politics, you know, for 20, 25 years since I've been down here. And I saw what happened, you know, with one of the Select Boards quitting the position, which I think is a very important position. And, you know, people counted on her to fill that term. And I just didn't like the way that ended. So I got kinda mad and I said, "You know what? It's time for me to do it." I had thought about it in the past, but I said to myself, "I'm gonna do it." So that was my motivation right away. I care about Plymouth. I love Plymouth. I came here as a young child when I was six years old. My father bought a home sight unseen, a cottage down on White Horse Beach. And the first night I ever came to Plymouth, first day, was July 3rd, which as we all know, it was like coming to Disneyland for a six-year-old.
Sure.
So my three brothers and myself at the time came and I absolutely loved it. And here it is almost 60 years later, and I still love it just as much, if not more. So it was time for me to give back to the community. The community's been so good to me. I have two great jobs in this community. You know, I'm Assistant Chief Court Officer at the Plymouth Trial Court. And we do great work there in the community. It's a community courthouse. And I've been able to help so many people in the community, especially through the opioid crisis, which we know how serious that is.
Yeah.
And so it's been a great feeling. It's great when people come up to you in the community and thank you for what you've done for their son or daughter, or husband, or wife. So it makes me feel good. I'm proud. And I was brought up like that. My father and mother brought us up, my kids, my siblings, to work hard, have a good, strong work ethic. Never forget your family. Don't forget where you came from and work hard. And that's what we've tried to do. And help people, excuse me, help people. And that's what I've tried to do. My other job at East Bay Grill, I meet so many people. And I was on the ground floor when that opened up. I was there from day one. And back then, you know, in 2000, the community wasn't thriving like it is today. I mean, the waterfront wasn't that busy. There was only a few restaurants down there. Now, look what's happened to the waterfront. And I've been a part of that. I really, and I've met so many wonderful people. We got involved in Pine Hills. We opened up the, we took over the food and beverage for the golf course there. Again, meeting another community up there in the Pine Hills, all the people up there. So I've watched that evolve and it's been great. And I learned about the town from East Bay Grill Monday and Tuesday nights. Well, my nights working. And by 10 o'clock, the place was kinda quiet. I would get all the boards, Select Board, Planning Board. It depends what night it was. I'd have the zoning board. And I also the people that presented, all the lawyers that were coming and presenting the articles, presenting the petitions or whatever they were doing. And the Town Planner. I used to sit with Lee Hartman and he'd talk about the town. And I get to know the ins and outs of how the town works. And it was very interesting to me. So anyway, here I am 21 years later and I feel it's my turn to give back to my community and to use my strong work ethic and dig in and try and help with some of the issues that we have faced in Plymouth.
That's great.
Sorry for the long answer.
Oh, no, that's fine. There is some confusion amongst the people out there as to exactly what is the Select Board responsible for. Can you, in two sentences, sum that up?
Yeah. They appoint committees. They approve licenses. That's a big part. They okay the budget, very involved with the budget. That's really, you know, we don't enact laws. They do enact bylaws. Actually, the town meeting would do that, but, you know, we don't create legislation like some people think. So, but that's really the most important is people coming, you know, for licenses and things like that. That's what the Select Board does.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to question number two. If that's okay with you. Plymouth is the largest town by land area in the state using one of the oldest forms of town government in the country. In your opinion, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government?
My opinion of that is we have to look at all forms of governments. The Charter Commission was formed for that reason. It's a review commission. We do it every five years. And I think it's very important that commission, that they look at all forms of government. They look at as many towns, and I watched one of the meetings and they were doing that. They mentioned a few towns. But they have to look at all city managers, mayor, city council, you know, different forms of government to find out, you know, what is best for Plymouth. I think town meeting the way it is right now, I think it's too slow. We're so, we're getting so big right now. We have so many issues that I would like to see government move a little bit quicker in Plymouth. So have we outgrown it? I'd like to see the other, I'd like to hear from the commission and see what their ideas from other forms of government.
That we come up with, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So when you say it's too slow, is that because you have to wait twice a year?
Yes, twice a year.
To enact or to vote on
Right.
large legislative processes or capital, or is that what you mean by too slow?
That's what I mean about it.
And why is that a detriment to the town of Plymouth?
Because, yeah, we need to get, for instance, if we need to get, let's just use our buildings.
Okay.
And we need to get repairs. Right now, we can't do it right away. We have to wait. And by that time, the problem could get much worse. And that's one situation that I'm talking about.
Yep. That if you had a different form of government, you might be able to handle those things on a much more
Immediately, yes.
Immediate. And monthly or weekly instead of, yeah, instead of biannually.
Right. And, you know, I think, I mean, I'm a town meeting member myself. And sometimes I see, there's a lot of people on there that just vote no on everything. And there's other people that vote yes on everything. So I think people gotta, we need to think more about what we're voting on. We really do. And I'm saying that as a town meeting member.
Yeah.
I'm not criticizing town meeting because I'm one of them, but I'm just saying that I think we all have to think.
Yeah.
And really think about what we're doing, so.
Plus, there's a huge amount of responsibility on town meeting members to know an awful lot of information.
Right.
And it's unpaid. Clearly, it's an unpaid position.
You just said it right. The information. It's incredible.
Yeah.
You know, you go to some of the carcasses, not the carcasses, but you go to some of the precinct, you know, meetings, you know, for a couple of nights before town meeting. And then it just goes bing, bing, goes real quick.
Yeah.
So you're right. There's so much information that
Yeah.
And we're not
It astounds me.
We're not professionals.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not paying, but
And you're not paid.
We have a $270 million budget. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
That's a big budget.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, and who knows where it's gonna go.
Yeah.
But it's, we're a growing town.
Yeah.
We have, you know, so many new issues coming before us now.
Absolutely. Can I just ask you, while we're talking about town meetings and town government and voting, the amount of people that don't vote is pretty astounding. What do you say to that? Now, what would you do as a select person to try to change that?
We have to let people know, and I'm doing this in my campaign right now. I'm going to different areas of Plymouth that I've been to a couple of areas that don't vote. And I'm trying to impress upon them that if you wanna be heard, vote. I mean, that's, when I was 18 years old, my father made me sign up for the vote. Took me right down to the Annex, Town Hall Annex in Brighton. And I had to register for the draft and to vote. And I've voted every election my whole life. And he did the same thing. He died when he was 91.
Wow.
And right up until they say, who, because when he moved to Plymouth, it always asked me who we voted for. But that was so important there. In the later years when he wasn't feeling well, absentee voted, but always voted.
Why do you think there's so much voter apathy?
I just, I think there's a lot of apathy in this country, you know, and I don't wanna really get into it. But people have to understand that the government is of the people, for the people. You know, if you're unhappy, vote. Change. You can make a difference. You can change things by voting.
Right.
I really think people have to take it a lot more serious. I try and tell my kids that.
Yeah.
They're all registered and I try and tell that. When you're voting, look at who you're voting for.
Right.
And make sure it's the person you want. Doesn't have to be who I support.
Right.
It doesn't, except for me. I hope they vote for me, my kids, but it's so important. And I don't know if it's, if it's the generation thing, I don't know what it is, but it's so important to vote because that's the only way you can make a change.
Right.
I used to always say, "If you haven't voted, don't stop complaining."
Exactly. And if you wanna vote, you have to be informed. So that leads me kinda to my next question, which is about, oh no, this is different. Actually, I think I'm gonna ask you that question and then I'll go back to this one. So given society's thirst for instantaneous information and responses, what is your opinion on the use of social media by any department or board or committee for the purpose of dispersing or collecting information or opinions? What are the advantages or disadvantages? And do you think that's an effective way for boards or committees to communicate with the public?
Social media today, that's what everybody does today. It's so effective. It reaches so many people, social media. It's, you know, this is the first time I've been involved with social media, this campaign. And I've seen how effective it is. So, you know, I'm on the PGDC and, you know, our website, we finally got a real good website a few years ago. And it's made a huge difference. We don't get, we don't get the complaints because now we can say, "Just go to our website."
Right.
It's so informative. So I'll use the PGDC as an example.
Yeah.
That we, that social media is very informative to the public.
Well, a website is a little different than social media. Now, social media too, I think a lot of people feel that social media is not being used effectively. Or the information that you're getting might be factual or it might be an opinion.
Okay.
And when you're on a board or a committee
Let me change my answer.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
If it's factual,
Yep.
I'm for it.
Okay.
If it's an opinion, I'm not for it.
Right. Okay.
So if it's factual information, that I think is important to get to the public. Opinions, that's, you know, let the public form their opinions. Send the facts to the public
Yeah.
And let them have their opinion on us.
Okay.
So if that's clear to, if you get what I'm trying to say.
Nope, no, I do.
I don't think, I don't think anybody, any elected official should be trying to sway somebody with their opinion if it's not factual. That's for sure.
Sure, sure. And how do you think boards and committees can communicate more effectively? So that people do know what's going on, that people want to be engaged, that they wanna get involved? How can, I mean, people's attention spans is like this. How do you get people to be engaged in what's going on in the town? Because it affects everybody.
I don't know the answer to that. I just, it's frustrating. They don't vote because they're not informed.
Right. It's a
Yeah.
It's the rat on the wheel.
To me, you know, people seem to only go to a board's meeting or look at it on TV or if it's something that affects them personally.
Yeah.
But to me, there's so much going on in the planning board every Tuesday, well, planning board every Tuesday night and the Select Boards, zoning boards.
Sure.
So I
Even the finance. I mean, if you follow a finance committee, if you actually watch all the meetings, you can know every dime that's being spent in this town.
Right.
And so everybody has the ability to actually get the information. We seem to have a problem having people take it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm focused on trying to get the boards to work together.
And do you think the Select Board can have a good impact on that?
I think so, yeah. We have to, we have to figure out how to get it to the public. I mean, you know, it's, you know, but the one thing I wanna talk about is the boards working together.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, we get a situation going on right now. And I'm not afraid to say it here, is you got the planning board and the Select Board on the same night, in the same room.
Well, it can't be in the same room. Well, I guess it can be. Scattered time.
One's at six, one's at seven.
Yeah.
Well, the six o'clock goes sometimes to nine o'clock.
Right.
I saw that a couple of weeks ago. And that really bothered me. And it really bothered me because there was a situation there and one chairman had to say something to another chairman, and that's not right.
What is your solution to that?
Working together. Sitting down, and you're gonna hear this a lot from me, sitting down and talking. Okay? And working together for the, in the best interest of Plymouth. Doing what's best for the people of Plymouth, so. And I think, I believe in talking and I believe in it's a solution. You know, talk about, talk about the problems.
Yep.
And you can solve it a lot better by talking than fighting. And I see that a lot.
Yeah.
And one thing I'll tell you that if I, when I get on this board, there's not gonna be fighting on the board because you can't have that. You can't have what happened before and you need to work together. We're not gonna agree.
I was just gonna say, you're five totally different people, so you're not gonna always speak with the same voice.
And I've served with Dicky before. I've served with Patrick on PGDC. They're both at one point on there. And we're not gonna agree all the time.
Right.
We can respectfully disagree. And you gotta, but you gotta listen. You know, I'll have an opinion sometimes and then I'll listen to the other side and I'll change my opinion. That's happened to me a lot in the PGDC. That's why, I mean, I'm the second longest tenured member there. And I've dealt with all different kinds of folks on that board.
Yep.
And, you know, we've done a lot of work. We've got a lot done because we work together to get it done. That's what I think the Select Board has to do.
Okay.
So, you know, and I don't mean to be so vague about the social media. It's still kinda new to me.
Yeah.
It's been very effective on my campaign.
Sure. And so you can see, it's very powerful, especially if you're a newbie to it, you can realize, wow.
But the part about the facts,
Yeah.
We only deal with facts.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, there's no, you know, fake news or whatever going on that. So I'm against that completely, so.
All righty. Okay, here's one. Although not specifically under the purview of the Select Board, what is your opinion on the tax burden that is placed on the residents for maintaining services and infrastructure versus increased commercial economic development? Then you also have to consider open space. You have to consider tax, the taxing of the commercial versus the personal and they're at the same rate. Should they be at different rates? It's a huge subject. Go ahead and try to dig into that one.
Everything revolves around, you know, it's all part of the same
Right.
The tax. A residential, a commercial tax revenue is inadequate to, for, that's why it's such, it's inadequate. We're trying to get to it. We need to get to at least a 30%. It's about 10% now.
The commercial tax
Yeah.
revenue that we get?
Yeah.
Of all the revenues, only 10%?
Only about 10%, okay. The residential
Is 90?
Everything else, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a serious problem. How do we solve that?
Right.
First of all, we have to, we have to increase our commercial developments. And we have to, we have to, first of all, fill all the commercial space that's already available right now that's not filled. We get some over in West Plymouth. You can see some, you know, the different areas. The industrial park has openings as well.
Now, when you say fill the commercial areas that are already approved to be commercial development, fill with what?
Commercial, commercial.
But is there any specific type of industry you wanna see?
Depends what you're talking about. If it's the industrial park, we need office, you know, and I'd like to see, like, offices bring businesses in, into the town. In the, in the commercial over by Market Basket, you'd see more like more retail-type stores. And I'd like to see higher-end stuff over there too. But in the industrial park, you wanna see office. I wanna see higher-paying jobs come to Plymouth. I think it's very important. So we have to, and then we have to identify. One of my keys is, they did a study a few years ago, which I can't wait to look at. Because we have to identify, 106 square miles of land we have.
Right.
And we have to identify the areas that are attractive to commercial development.
Right.
And we have to, we have to work with the planning board, the zoning boards, the environmental people, you know, all the different boards, work together and identify those tracts of land and talk to developers too. We need to talk to developer. We need to talk to both sides. And I get this, a lot of this information from the Town Planner. And then we zone it commercial only. And when the developments come through, the boards have to do their job. We have to make sure that the environment and the neighborhoods aren't negatively impacted by this development. I know people have called me and they're, you're afraid of, you know, how it's gonna impact. Well, we have to use open space. Open space is key too. The Open Space Committee, key. So we have, we have to buffer these industrial areas and buffer them for the neighborhoods. So they, and we've got wildlife to consider too.
Right.
As we lose open space, we have wildlife that has nowhere to go. Where are they gonna go? They're gonna go into your neighborhoods. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on there.
Yeah.
But we have to work together. Again, we have to work together,
Yep.
all the boards and do what's in the best interest of the town.
So just to piggyback on the commercial development, what about, you said you wanna have people to be able to come here and have high-paying jobs. Right now, people can't afford to live here.
Yep.
What do we do for those folks?
Affordable housing. What is affordable housing?
Yeah, what is affordable housing? That's a big question.
First question. And I'm a guy, I can tell you my background, that I had a summer house on White Horse Beach. I bought that in 87 for my father. So I had a condo in Boston and I had my summer house. And then when I got married in 93 and I had a child a year later and I was gonna have a second child, it was time to, I need to move to a home. I couldn't afford to live in my hometown in Boston. So I went down to my second home,
Yeah.
which I had, I had roots there, thank God.
Yeah.
And I was familiar. So I was able to move down to Plymouth in my little cottage.
Yep.
And it was 1,000 square feet. We winterized it.
Yeah.
And I brought my kids up there for a few years till I was able to afford, I sold both units, both, and I've bought a house in West Plymouth. But I was a victim of what you're talking about.
Right.
And I would love to have my kids, if they wanna choose to stay, or not just my kids, but
Any kids, yeah.
any kids, to be able to live where they grew up. And right now, it's not affordable in Plymouth.
Right.
So, you know, we have some affordable housing. I know there's been some private-public, it was one down in Manhattan. There was one by Market Basket that created some units, rental units that are affordable in perpetuity. And I was for that. I voted for that as a town meeting member. At first, I was concerned with the public-private. I didn't get it.
Yeah.
But then I realized what I was doing.
Yeah.
So we need more of that. And we have to work with the developers to try and, you know, convince them how important it is and see if we can get the develops, some of the developers to cooperate, you know. So it's, we have to also, look, we gotta look to other towns. We got, Hyannis has a program, a business program that was brought to my attention, that they built some affordable housing for the workers
Yeah.
that so they could work and be close to where they're working. That's important, so we have to figure that out.
Yeah. I know that the Vineyard and Nantucket are struggling with that.
Yeah.
You know, the seasonal workers certainly can't afford to live there.
The price of real estate is, I mean, in Plymouth, imagine what Nantucket is, but
Sure, yeah.
So, I mean, I get it. It's
There's a lot of, and it's all connected, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, you need your workers, you need them close by, so.
Yeah.
But I haven't got the complete answer, but I will support any kind of affordable housing and, you know, whether it's with the community preservation monies or, you know, I will support any of those projects.
Is there anything that, any subject that you wanna bring up? Anything that you wanna really talk about because you feel passionate about?
Tourism.
Tourism. Okay, go.
Number one industry is tourism. You know, I mean, I obviously work part-time on the waterfront at East Bay Grill.
So you see it.
And I see, we need, we need things for our tourists.
Like what?
Well, I'll tell you what we don't need. I don't want any more condos, any more apartments on the waterfront. It's, tourists don't wanna come and look at apartments and condos. And think about it, when you go to different resort areas, that's not what you wanna look at. We need, we need retail, but I'd like to see some higher-end retail to complement, you know, shops, to complement some of the shops we already have. In the new building on 150 Water, you get some high-end spots there. There's a few high, I think that's great. I love seeing that. So I'd like to see some of that and just tourists-related businesses. There's a restaurant going in where Papageno's was. I was concerned. I thought that was gonna be another development, but it's not. There's gonna be a restaurant going in. I think that's good.
But for tourists that wanna come down for the day,
Right.
where do they park? How do they get here? How do they get around? How are they walking around with bags of stuff that they've purchased in the stores that we want them to buy things in?
Well, how do they get around? We have, parking is obviously close to me being on the PGDC. So we've created, we've tried to create, we've created almost 500 spots since I became involved. And we bought that MTA parking lot by the 1620 Hotel. That's 170 spaces, 175 parking spaces that we paid a half a million dollars for. And that was a steal, as it turned out.
Yeah.
When you look at the $5.7 million parking structure for 172 spaces
Right.
up by the Town Hall.
Yep.
So, and we did that too. I'm proud of getting that done. It was too much money, but we got it done. We also have created, we bought the Santander Bank and there's 80, there was 85 spots there that we kept public parking.
Yep.
Okay, it's very important to all the businesses. We also have two free lots that we've been leasing down near Nelson, Nelson Beach.
Yep.
We did that because of the overflow when they did the Nelson Beach project. It was inadequate parking, so we added those two parking lots. And this is about 100 spaces right there. And then the Morton School, we leased that now. They were able to use that. That's all free parking. Those three lots are free parking, so.
What about a shuttle now to get?
So we're working right now, if you, it's called the Circuit. The Circuit right now, we were supposed to start and then COVID hit.
Right.
So we, $100,000, we donated to, I think we had to give it to the
Through the chamber?
I think we gave it to the chamber.
Or see Plymouth, something, yes, so that you could
Yeah.
I remember hearing about that, yeah.
But we, we did that, $100,000. And then the COVID hit, so we didn't do it. It's gonna be three vehicles to start. And they will, they'll be in the downtown and waterfront areas doing just what you
Yeah, just doing the loop.
It's a free app, so, for instance, Sam at Anna's Harborside. And I'm having, we're having dinner. I'm almost finished. But we wanna go over to the craft beer store over up in downtown Plymouth.
Yep.
We don't feel like walking. Yeah. We've been out, we get bags.
Yep.
You just get on the app. It's a free app. And they tell you, and they come and they'll pick you right up and they take you there.
That's great.
It's a five-passenger. We need, we need things like that. As far as a shuttle goes, we tried that before. There was a trolley that we had years ago that didn't work out. So I'm not sure how well that will work.
But plans are percolating. Okay.
Plans are percolating. And we have to, I keep saying this, we have to keep looking to our neighbors, to other areas similar to us.
What are they doing?
What do they do? We have to do that.
Okay. We only have a minute left for you to face the camera and tell people why you want them to vote for you.
Well, I've gotten a lot of support. There's a reason for that support and I'm proud of it. I. I've met a lot of people in this town and I've helped a lot of people in this town. It's because it's what I do. It's not because I'm looking for anything in return. And I certainly never thought I'd be running for office. But now that I am. I just want you, I want everybody to know that I'm a hardworking guy. I'm not gonna change. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna serve with that transparency, honesty, integrity and ethics. I can tell you that right now. Uh, that's the promise that I'll make. Uh, I I will do when an issue comes up. I I don't, I don't have all the answers. I'm not, I I might not be the smartest guy in the room, but I will look. To the smartest guy in the room and I will ask questions. I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna do my research. I'm gonna talk to experts. We have a lot of fantastic people that already work for the town that I will use too as, you know, as resources. And I will make my decisions. That's what I feel is in the best interest of Plymouth. My agenda is Plymouth, that people of Plymouth.
Thank you, Charlie, for participating in this interview and we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign. And for our viewers out there, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, visit our website, packtv.org/elections. For replay times and online viewing options, including Pack TV's on demand and streaming service, Pack TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the special election on Saturday, August fourteenth. Thank you and good day. Today, we're speaking with Steve Bolleton, one of the four candidates in this special election. Thank you so much, Steve, for joining me today.
Thank you so much for having me.
Awesome. We're gonna get right into our questions, okay?
Terrific.
Okay. First of all, what is your motivation for running for this seat, for this board of select uh select board seat? Where there's only really nine months until you have to run again next spring? And secondly, can you talk about what your vision or your version of what a select board member should do and be?
Certainly. First, the reason that I'm running is relatively straightforward. Plymouth faces a series of interconnected challenges. We're at a crossroads. We have a growing need for services. In the last ten years, our population has increased by fifteen percent. We have increasing facilities and infrastructure costs and the town has certainly seen the effects. Of not properly maintaining those facilities. We have environmental challenges. We have a coastline that's facing erosion. We have forests. That are facing potential drought and fire hazard. And as a sole source aquifer, our water supply is absolutely critical. All of these challenges have led to significant residential tax increases. In the last ten years, our spending has grown by forty three percent. And during that same period of time, the amount from residential taxes has increased by sixty five percent. What we're doing isn't sustainable. We need to change our focus and our perspective. I am running because I bring a different perspective. As somebody with degrees in government, law and finance. And thirty years of working in law for. Government-related organizations such as an Environmental Trade Association, which lobbied for hazardous waste cleanup in Washington DC. And twenty five years in New England, representing municipalities with all aspects of their government relations. I bring a different perspective, a different focus. I have learned from the mistakes of others. Now I wanna bring that knowledge and experience to the select board. The select board is identified as the policymaking, goal-setting and regulation. Organizing body of the town of Plymouth. That's how it's set forth in our town charter. In short, the select board is the CEO of Plymouth. We should be setting policies, establishing goals and making regulations to achieve them. I think that the select board has gotten away from that in the last decade or so. And it's time to move that back to where we are. We should be making big picture decisions that benefit all of Plymouth going forward, recognizing all of these challenges that we're facing. We need to have a single body working together cooperatively to come up with plans. That can then be implemented by the town.
So just to piggyback off that for one sec, so. Are you, does the select board now though have the authority, does have the power to do that? And. If you do, can that be done by people who are re- really, really working part time and basically for nothing?
Well, the the way town government is set up. The select board has certain powers that are established by the town charter.
Right.
And that's what they can do. No, they can't do certain things. They don't do the hiring and firing. They, we have a town manager for that. But what we do is we have the ability to set forth policies. And then direct our town manager and by extension, our town employees to carry out those policies. It's simply setting forth the goals of the town. It's saying, we, the select board, wish to achieve this. For example. We need to increase our business tax base.
Okay, well, why don't we get into that in a different question, cause that's a whole nother subject.
All right, certainly.
That was great. All right, so let's go to um our next question. Plymouth is the largest town by land uh in the entire state and we're using the oldest forms of of government in the entire country. Um, in your opinion, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government?
I certainly think that Plymouth has outgrown the town meeting form of government as it is currently situated.
Okay.
That is why seventy eight percent of the voters at the last election. Voted to have a charter commission come and take a look at that. And that's what they're doing. And I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it's something that government should do regardless. And the charter commission has started by. Presenting some very good ideas, some general, some general. Forecasts, if you will. And ultimately being very open about what it is looking at, who it is talking to and making that information available to the public. And I think that we need to see what they're seeing, as well as public putting in its own thoughts and guidance to them as to what we need to do. I certainly think that we need to have a focus on town government that is more full-time and professional. Someone once described to me as saying that Plymouth is a quarter billion dollar corporation with sixty five thousand shareholders. If you were one of those shareholders, would you want a part-time CEO? So I understand that mentality. It's one of the things that I do bring to town government. I am a retired individual, which means that I have the time and the ability to commit to this significant undertaking.
Okay. All right, in in your opinion, your own opinion, do you think the town would be better served with a mayoral type? Versus a town meeting? Just if you had to answer that question, yes or no?
I can't answer that question, yes or no. Uh, that's why we have a charter commission.
Okay.
I think that it's incumbent upon the town to let them do their job.
Fair enough.
Uh, I I don't have the information that they have. I don't have the information that I feel I would need to honestly answer that question.
Okay, fair enough. What about um the fact that so few people turn out to vote? The percentage of of voters i- in all of the towns around here is is pretty dismal. What is your opinion on that?
It's certainly very disappointing. And I don't think that it has to do with when the election is held, weekday, weekend, spring, summer, fall. Uh, unfortunately, I think that it results from a perception within a lot of people in town. That their vote doesn't matter. Plymouth is still very much a tight-knit community. And I think that despite the fact that we have forty seven thousand registered voters. Many of them feel disaffected. They think, gee. This is a group of insiders. It's the same people over and over with the same agendas. And what I have to say really doesn't matter. And that's unfortunate because. Voting is one of those great rights that we have. Plymouth of all places, where the Mayflower Compact started. The road to democracy should be one of those places in which voting is heralded. Not something that's considered to be disappointing to the people. It's one of the reasons that I'm running, to show people that you don't have to be an insider. You don't have to have had all of these connections and have all of these support mechanisms. In order to come and speak out on behalf of all of the residents. Because the problems that Plymouth faces aren't limited to one neighborhood or one demographic or one group. They are townwide. And we need townwide solutions. We need voices from all quadrants. And so we really do need to encourage the people to vote by convincing them their vote has meaning.
Exactly, true. Okay, um, let's go to our next question. Um, although not specifically under the purview of the select board, what is your opinion about the tax burden that is placed on the residents? Uh, for maintaining services and infrastructure versus increased commercial economic development? Then you have the question of open space. Then you have the question of a separate uh tax rate for businesses and individuals. It's a huge subject and it 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 needs to be addressed clearly. What is your idea for addressing it?
In a thirty minute forum?
Five minutes.
It's not a five-minute problem.
Right.
Obviously. And you've put your finger on a large portion of it. Our problems are interconnected. You really can't address. One issue without talking about all of them. You can't talk about taxes without talking about infrastructure spending. Without talking about job growth, without talking about development, which leads you to open space and environmental concerns. It is a huge, huge area in which we really need a unified cooperative approach. Let me start with the first part of that, which is the economic issue. Right now, eighty two percent of the taxes. That are generated by the town of Plymouth are residential taxes. Building homes doesn't solve that problem because families moving in. Cost the town more in services than the taxes that they generate. So the only solution has to be growing business in town. Now, what I'm saying is nothing new. This was pointed out as a forthcoming problem in our two thousand and four master plan. And successive candidates over the years have all said the same thing. And it's disappointing to me that twenty years later, I'm here saying it again. But rather than taking action and moving forward, the town has actually stepped backwards. We have gone from a twenty percent commercial and industrial tax base to fourteen percent. It's dropping every year.
Why is that?
Well, part of it is a perception in town. Or out of town, that Plymouth is not friendly to business. That has to change. It will require Plymouth to refocus its efforts, not just in encouraging businesses to come here. But in making it easier for them to do so. Narrowing our planning department focus, creating avenues for people to fast track. If they're going to go into open existing commercial spaces. We also need to start talking about creating jobs. That are good for Plymouth residents. We don't need more strip malls. We don't need more big box stores. We don't need more retail. That provide only minimum wage jobs for people mostly coming outside of Plymouth into town.
Right.
We need to create. A business hub in the southeast of Massachusetts.
And you're saying Plymouth could be that.
Plymouth is ideally that hub. We have the perfect geographic location. We have the largest population. We have diverse resources available. We have space available now and we have space to grow, properly grow. We need to do a complete top-down review of where business belongs in Plymouth. We need to make sure that we are looking to encourage those types of businesses that will become part of our community. That will hire our young people so that they can stay here and continue to be part of our community.
If they can find a place to live that they can afford.
That is part of the development aspect. And Plymouth has a wonderful concept in its two thousand and four master plan. The Village Green Concept. The goal was to avoid urban sprawl. It was to zone so that you created communities around a central village. The Pine Hills, White Cliffs, Red Brook. These were all examples. We need more of those with a focus on affordable. And when I say affordable housing, I mean affordable to working people in town.
Right.
But that's where we get to the economics again. In the year two thousand, the person making the median income in Plymouth could afford the median house.
Right.
Four years later, impossible.
Right.
Median income had gone up three percent. The median house price, a hundred and twelve percent.
Yeah, I knew, I knew it was about a hundred. That's, I didn't know it was that high.
That's, that was the number according to the statistics that I have read. We need to create better jobs so that people can afford the homes. We also still need to create homes that are more affordable. That goes to where some of our zoning is. We still have a lot of area that is zoned for large parcel.
Yeah.
That should be zoned so that we can create clusters of smaller homes around open space.
Right.
So that people are not buying a home based upon the cost of a large lot.
Yep.
But they have access to that needed open space. And open space is critical. It's the reason. That so many people come here and visit and move here. It's one of the reasons that I moved here. The ability to go walking, hiking, biking is absolutely critical.
And Plymouth, then there's no better town around than Plymouth for all of that.
Unquestionable.
Let me do, just. Ask you to answer this question. Do you think that the uh, that businesses, corporations? Should have a different tax rate? And should it be depending on if it's a mom and pop business versus if it's a conglomerate that's owned by some multinational group?
Creating different tax rates is a huge quagmire. There are a lot of legal aspects that go to that uh in terms of treating businesses differently.
Okay.
And that's something that requires a lot more. Study and evaluation. In terms of creating a different business tax rate. Most places that do that. Do it when their business tax base exceeds thirty or thirty-five percent.
Which ours does not.
Ours is fourteen percent.
What should it be? In the perfect world?
In the perfect world, I would love to see thirty percent. I don't see Plymouth as ever being one of those towns. In which business exceeds residential.
Right.
It's not.
Right.
It's not our character. It's not, that would affect the quality of the life of the people here. But we have the room to create clusters for business. But again, the right type of business. The pandemic has changed the way business is done. People are going to be working remotely, even if it's a hybrid model, part-time.
Right.
That's going to give them the opportunity to select the place that they want to live. More people are going to say, look, if I only have to be in Boston one or two days a week, I can live in Plymouth.
Yeah.
And I can take the train.
Right, I don't mind that commute, one or two days.
One or two days a week, versus five.
Okay.
And so we need to be thinking about businesses and people who are conducting that type of business. Because we now have the opportunity to use some of the great personal resources we have in town. We have a wonderful hospital. Jordan was a great hospital and the affiliation with Beth, with Beth Israel has made it even more so. We should be the medical center for southeast Massachusetts. People from the Cape should be coming here, not going to Boston when they need medical care.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you on that one, cause we've gone way past our five minutes on that question. Thank you. Um, this is totally different. Given society's thirst for instantaneous information and responses. What is your opinion on the use of social media by any department or board committee for the purpose of dispersing or collecting information or opinions? What do you see as advantages and or as disadvantages? And how do you think the select board should best communicate with everyone? Loaded question.
Very loaded question. And ironically, I know the select board attended an online seminar. On ethics just a week or so ago, in which that topic was discussed. So, one of the things that the speaker talked about was the need for single consistent message. Because one problem that does come from this instantaneous social world that we live in is a barrage of information. And in a rush to get information out, we have things that are accurate, things that are inaccurate, and things that are partially accurate. And potentially misleading. That's the nature of our world right now. But the one thing is that the town shouldn't be doing is doing anything to contribute to that. In terms of receiving information from the public, I think. In terms of receiving information from the public, I think social media is a wonderful tool. Uh, the days of people needing to seek out their representatives and head to an office, to town hall, to a personal office, to get people to listen to them are over.
Right.
And we're sixty-five thousand people. The select board, as much as I know they each and every one would love to speak to everybody, simply can't do it. You mentioned again the time constraints that so many have. They are people who are otherwise working. They have families. They have other committees and they have social commitments.
Right.
It is not completely fair to them to make them full-time employees when that's not the role they signed up for.
Right. So getting back to the best way for any department, any board or committee to communicate to the public, how do how do we? How do you, how does the select board set that standard to say if you want accurate information, this is where you go?
Well, obviously through the IT department and through the managers of each of the various town departments, there needs to be a single consistent policy as to who can speak on social media on behalf of the town. Now, I'm obviously not talking about censoring people's opinions about matters. Everyone has the right to their opinion and should have the right to express it. But in terms of what information comes officially from the town, there needs to be a consistent policy. There needs to be someone identified from each group and organization who can issue those opinions. And there needs to be clear rules and regulations as to what they can issue. They are made to, they they need to have an understanding that this is not a forum for their individual opinion.
Right.
But rather for information coming from the town and for information that the town needs to receive.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a question or a topic that we have not covered today that you would like to talk about?
Oh, there are so many. Uh, I would love to be able to talk about.
Go ahead.
Oh. Land use and environmental concerns and infrastructure spending.
Okay.
Infrastructure spending is obviously a big one. Because maintenance isn't glamorous. It's not going to grab headlines. It doesn't make for good social media posts. It doesn't create create photo opportunities. But it's essential. I mean, we have seen all too well the cost of not properly constructing and maintaining our facilities. It is probably the single biggest area of avoidable expense in the town of Plymouth. Now, most maintenance costs are predictable. Families have them all the time. We all budget for them.
Right.
And we treat them as long-term expense. The town doesn't do that. Maintenance is treated as new every year. I think we need to change that. I think we need to create a fund that is automatically funded for maintenance of set facilities and infrastructure. And this is not an out-of-the-box kind of idea. In fact, many federal grants are now requiring that. Because they want to know that when they're providing money to a town to build a project or to purchase equipment, the town has money set aside to maintain that.
Right, right.
It's simply fiscally prudent action.
Why do you think that hasn't been done up until now? Because every town has that same problem.
Because maintenance isn't sexy. Unfortunately, it's it's a matter of competing.
For dollars.
Wants versus needs. And very often wants meet, they win out.
Yeah.
Over needs. But if there's a dedicated fund set aside for maintenance, trust me, people will talk about maintenance because people will always discuss something where there's money available to spend on it.
Right, right. Now, is there any big, large capital projects that you see that you support or don't support in the future of Plymouth?
I think that the one that we have to focus on, and there are so many, but the one that that really catches my eye is the need for water security. And this again goes to, as I said, the land use aspect as well. We need to make sure that as a sole source aquifer community, we are doing what we need to protect our water supply. Water is the genesis of almost everything. It will be the gen- it's the genesis of how we live. It is the genesis of our business. It is the genesis of so much of our recreation, which leads of course to our tourism, which is again one of our largest businesses. So, I think what we need to do is make sure we have proper land use study to protect those areas that we truly need to protect for environmental concerns and water protection. And at the same time, make sure that we complete the necessary studies so that we know what type of wells we're going to be needing in the future. Because I've seen studies going back from twenty sixteen talking about two wells, three wells, four wells.
Yeah.
And.
And you really have to educate yourself on this subject because it's 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 quite involved. The whole, I I mean, people just think you turn on the tap and the water's there. I mean, you see the signs now around town saying, don't water your lawn. People need the the water the lawns don't.
It's very true. Uh, and it's part of the national discussion, obviously. We're seeing water shortages. We're we're looking at Lake Mead at a level that is beyond drought stage. We're looking at an inability for people to have drinking water. We need to look at conservation. That is a huge issue. And again, preserving open spaces rather than lawns but natural habitat.
Right.
Is going to certainly help that. At the same time, I've had the good fortune to be associated with environmental engineers for most of my career. I've dealt with water projects in towns all over New England. Uh, so I do have a pretty good understanding as to what is involved from an engineering standpoint in terms of building, maintaining water infrastructure systems.
So that that's a big one in your in your book.
It is, but you know, there there's the phrase, uh, water is life.
Yeah.
And I I don't think there's a much better truism.
Right, and I think a lot of people would agree with you on on that topic. So you have a few minutes left here. Uh, wanna take a couple minutes just to address uh, the people, the voters, and why they should be voting for you this time around?
I would love to. Thanks so much.
And you can actually, you can look right into your own camera there.
Fantastic. I hope you've heard from what I've said today that my education and experience bring a different perspective to town government. As I said, I have a bachelor's degree, a law degree, and a degree in international finance. The critical thinking skills and experiences that I gained from that education, which was so instilled by my parents into me, have prepared me well for a thirty-year legal career focusing heavily on government. As I mentioned, I started my legal career representing environmental engineering trade associations, lobbying to clean up circula and recrocites throughout the United States. From there, I moved to Massachusetts and I have represented businesses and municipalities in all of their key functions for over twenty-five years. I've had the ability to work with literally dozens of cities and towns addressing almost every aspect of municipal government. I've handled bidding challenges, contract negotiations, construction claims, employment disputes, uh, and data breaches, just some. And I've had the good fortune to represent municipal employees such as police officers, teachers, bus drivers and administrators in claims brought against them relating to their town functions. I've had the ability to see from the inside what so many towns have done right and done wrong. As I tell people, my job for twenty-five plus years has been to learn from other people's mistakes. I want to bring that experience to the Plymouth Select Board. I have no agenda. I have no financial interest that I'm trying to protect. I have no constituency that I am trying to satisfy. I am an independent voice for everyone here in Plymouth. In order to address these critical issues, we need new ideas. We need new approaches and we need to take a cooperative spirit into our discussions. I come to the select board willing to work with everyone for the benefit of everyone. I hope I have your vote on August fourteenth.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Steve, for joining us. Thank you for participating. We wish you the best of luck throughout this campaign and in your election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, packtv.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the special election on Saturday, August fourteenth. Thank you and good day. Today, we're speaking with Vedna Haywood, one of the four candidates in the special election for select board. Vedna, welcome, and I'm gonna jump right into the first question.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for having me.
What is your motivation for running for this position right now, especially since you're gonna have to run again if you're successful in the spring? And what is, in your estimation, the defined role of a member of the select board?
Well, um, I decided, thank you, Jilla, for the question. I decided to run um because I believe that Plymouth deserves a choice um, and uh who advocates for them. Uh, on May eighteenth, uh, there was a on May eighteenth, there was a gap that was created when someone resigned. And so I saw this as an opportunity to use my years of service to broaden my commitment to the town. Yes, it is a nine-month um position, but I believe that um if elected, um, I will continue to still be in that, not only serving, but in a campaign mode. So as we reach um into, I guess, next year in the May, um, you know, uh, May elections, I would have already um continued to already be in that um mode, a need be. And then in terms of what is the um, the role of the select board, it's a varied role. So the role of a select board member is to adopt policy and guidelines. It's to enact um rules. Um, it is to work with the town manager um in terms of um, you know, um being more efficient and orderly, the orderly operation of the town itself. Um, it is to um approve all collective bargaining um agreements, as we also do on the school board. Um, it is to meet um with the elected boards and the commissions within the town. Um, it's um, it's a varied group and it's also to appoint the town manager, town council, registered voters. People who are who are parts of boards and commissions, um, if uh, as as um stated within our charter.
Okay, now, question. There are a bevy, there's scores and scores of boards and commissions.
Yes.
Um, in the town.
Yeah.
Do you, uh, is the select board supposed to meet with all of them over the course of the year or just the more policymaking ones or budget-making ones?
My understanding, uh, the responsibility of the select board is to meet jointly with elected boards of the town for the purpose of sharing information. So, um, I know that, like, for instance, uh, within the school committee side, we do have a lot of um different um uh committees. Uh, within that.
Subcommittee?
Subcommittees. And so within that, it's it's divvied up between the school board members. So, um, my understanding is that as a select board member as well, your responsibilities um for these particular boards are divvied up within.
Oh, so the whole select board doesn't meet with the whole other board?
To my understanding.
Yeah, there might be just someone is assigned to a certain board.
Or representative of.
To bring that. Now, let's talk a little bit, you, right now, you are on the school committee.
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you can't obviously serve in both or can you?
Can't. I can't, as many people have asked. Can you, please?
Yeah.
No, I I can't. I'm serving both.
Was that a difficult choice to know that i- if you are elected to the the select board, you will be off the school committee?
It was a difficult choice, but I also see this as opportunity to continue to advocate for the school on the uh, um, as a select board member. So it's not that I'm abandoning this role per se. Um, it is um the fact that I will still have the opportunity to advocate, but in a different way.
Okay, okay, that's good. All right, we're gonna go into the next question. Uh, Plymouth is the largest town by land area in the state.
Yes.
And yet one of the oldest, using one of the oldest forms of government in the country. In your opinion, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government?
To say that, um, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government, um, I believe that, um, this is a great question. I think that we are now using the opportunity to have this um conversation. Um, with the with the creation of the Charter Commission, um, we're now looking to see what what works for us, what's the, what's efficient in terms of this um particular um form of government, what is challenging. Um, I think that, uh, this is an opportunity to reimagine and work towards um possibly a more accountable and equitable um, and effective form of government. Um, so.
If if you had to decide, if it was up to you, would we keep a town meeting form of government or would go to a different form of government?
Um, well, it isn't up to me to decide at this point. It's up to the Charter Commission um to actually um evaluate this. But what I would say is that I think, given the um, the the fact that we as a um community have grown, the fact that we have a budget that's almost three hundred million dollars. Um, I think there are some points, um, some areas where there does need improvement in order for them to, in order for the town to run more efficiently. Um, and um, and adequately serve our our constituency. So, um, I do um agree that there needs to be um some areas of improvement um within that. And whatever, whatever is chosen, um, I hope that it um, it speaks to 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 kind of improving some of these challenges um that we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the Charter Commission is is going to just take up to a year and a half, possibly up to two years to
Yes.
Make a recommendation and then they make the recommendation and clearly it goes to the voters.
Yes.
So the voters end up deciding.
Yes.
Um, so, for for example, the select board, five people that literally have to know almost everything about the town. How can it effectively be done in a part-time position that isn't paid or is stifled, it's it might as well not be paid?
I see. So, there are so, um, well, that's that's a valid question. Um, and I think when we look at even different parts, our different um forms of government throughout, let's just say, this Commonwealth. We have this um, this council manager um, uh, form. Um, we do have a council mayor form, which for the most part is a paid position. Um, uh, and um, and and our form of government. And then there's also a commission form um that exists, but it's very, it's very rare. Uh, so yes, the, I think the issue is that when we look like, when we look at a mayor and council form of government, um, we have this understanding that this particular, this particular person will be elected not necessarily having some of the background that, say, a town manager has um, in terms of um, uh, public administration. Um, and um, and what's it called, like the business acumen?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, um, when we, and and when we look at a volunteer form, we still have a town management side. Um, but we also do not run into some of the issues where there could be special interests attached to, um, you know, persons who um, within a a paid form. I, for me, um, whatever is the most efficient, whatever continues to keep us as a town sustainable
Yeah.
um, is what I will vote for once the, that information is aggregated and and
Presented.
Presented to us.
So, and my other question, kind of piggybacking off this, is is the lack of amount of people who actually show up and vote? How do we get, and it's all the towns around here, it's not just Plymouth, how do we get more involvement from the citizens of our town?
I mean, that's a, it's a burgeoning question. I mean, it's it's a question, I think, even as a um member of the league, when we talk about um being civically engaged and and um, I think a lot of it too is actually um, you know, one is modeling, two is um actually like engaging the um constituency to help them understand the importance of local government. When we have larger elections on the federal level, um, you do have a
A better turnout.
A much better turnout.
Yeah.
Um, but I think um perhaps having a better understanding as to the impact that local government has on you. Um, people are working, people are doing, um, you know, uh, raising their children.
Right, right.
And there's difficult, you know, there's difficulty and and so maybe, maybe like specifically in our sense, maybe it's, should we move our, should we move a larger election to a time that is more um feasible? Should this May election go to the fall?
And the problem is, is with our form of government, we have now. And the problem is, is with our form of government, we have now, you can't do that.
Yes.
That's, yeah, so that, that's all, so, yeah.
Yes, yes.
It'll be interesting to see. All right, let's go on to the third question. Although not specifically under the purview of the Select Board, what is your opinion on the tax burden placed on residents for maintaining services and infrastructure? And versus increased commercial economic development? You also have to include, well, what about open space? And what about a separate tax rate for businesses or for, for individuals? It's a huge, huge question.
It is a huge question.
So how would you start to address that?
Okay, so the tax burden. So I just want to be, I want to clarify the question that you asked. So what is the?
Well, it's not, the Select Board really has nothing to do with that, but a lot of people have suggested that if we have a lot more commercial tax revenue and development, we can offset some of the tax burdens that the residents are paying.
Yes.
What's your opinion on that?
So local government diversification requires, it should require a greater reliance on a multitude of revenue services. So I believe that there should, diversification away from property tax can lead to an improved, like, position within the town. And, and, and so when we have a total reliance on one system, we risk the fact that if that system somehow has a break, so we talk about the housing crisis, right? And, and so you have an issue where people are losing their homes, therefore, there's this inability to pay for taxes. So therefore, that becomes a hit on our particular economy, considering that, I believe, 97% of our receipts come from our residents. So it would, it would, like, behoove us to actually find different ways to actually diversify our receipts within this town, so that we don't have, the onus is not on the taxpayer.
So what are some of those other forms of revenue that we could be looking at?
So we talk about tourism, and so, and, and how Plymouth is a tourist town. So how can we somehow, like, mitigate those barriers to people coming to Plymouth? I've mentioned, we have to look at our transportation, whether that be transit or by waterways. I'm also investigating the blue economy that the Cape Cod has, has, begun to implement. In fact, I believe the governor, the governor's administration actually provided some grant monies in means of, like, $4 million for a total of $57 million towards these blue economies. And what that does, it's a, it's a economic and an environmental, like, sustainable way to bring monies or a different type of economy into your town by using your water, your waterways and your coastal, you know, your coastal shores. And so, and in that, you're bringing in jobs, you're bringing in academia. And so this is a different way to kind of diversify. And also, you're bringing in monies to support local businesses here, because, I mean, we're, there's some specific issues that we have here. Where there's an inability to pay our employees a livable wage, the affordable, affordability issue that exists here in terms of people who are trying to stay in their homes and people who don't have the ability to purchase homes. So, you know, how can we have this influx of money to come into this community so that it supports us in a different way and not having the onus on just one revenue stream?
Right. So let's, let's, since you brought up the housing, let's talk about affordable housing. What possible plans would you support or bring forward or be part of to try to bring some affordability, especially to first-time homebuyers? Or, or our kids that grow up here but can't afford to live here? They can't stay here unless they stay with mom and dad?
Yeah, they can't stay. So I, so, you know, really looking at inclusionary zoning in terms of affordable housing, also looking at some of, you know, seeing if there, we could possibly create some sort of grants for first-home buyers. And then, too, in terms of development, well, this doesn't go necessarily to the affordable, affordability aspect, but I think perhaps implementing some community-like benefit agreements with our developers, so that some of that, some of the resources, after some of these developments are created, these residential developments are created, that onus for the upkeep does not remain on the homebuyer, that there is a little bit more accountability on the development side for creating infrastructure towards some of these now more trafficked areas due to residential building.
Similar to what condo associations have to do now.
Yes, somewhat. For some, yes.
For a different type of housing.
For a different type of housing. So when I lived in the South Florida area, if a developer was creating a subdivision, they were responsible for roads.
Yeah.
And actually, money towards the schools. So any resources above and beyond the capabilities of that particular city or town, this is, this was, they, they were responsible.
Interesting. Okay, that's an interesting point. Okay, let's go to question number four. Given society's thirst for instantaneous information and responses, what is your opinion on the use of social media by any department or board committee member for the purpose of dispersing or collecting information or opinions? What do you see as advantages and disadvantages to utilizing social media?
That's interesting you say the thirst. So the advantages of utilizing social media is that, yes, you can somehow attempt to collate, you can disseminate information very quickly. Okay. The disadvantage is that you cannot have a conversation that has the ability to kind of decipher tone within that conversation. I think social media, in one sense, if you are, if there's emergency information, if there are, like, bulletins or bullets, you know, that you need to be disseminated, that's, that, you know, that's fine. If you are announcing particular things that are happening within the community, or if there's a way to sign up that makes it easier for others, that's fine. And you also have to think, too, you know, we live in an intergenerational community, and particular generations, this is how they communicate. On the flip side, though, in order to have authentic conversation, I don't think social media is the place for that. I think we still have to, at least, you know, go back to our regular, like, speaking in order for us to somehow come to some sort of, if we, if it's, if it's to come to an agreement or an understanding, I think meeting with people, whether it be virtually and/or in person, is the best form of communication. But in terms of dissemination quickly for information, yes. To have a back-and-forth, absolutely. I, I think it's, I think it's a difficult space, just because you cannot decipher tone. And I think at times, too, it's a space that allows people to actually throw out information, but not to receive it themselves. So it's.
And what about the vetting of the information that is, that is put, I mean, that's, that's always in any, in any format, it's, it's always, you know, are you getting a trusted source?
Absolutely.
So do you think the town, let's, let's, let's go further into that. How can the town do better to communicate the bevy of issues that, that people need to be aware of or know of or be educated about? Because, again, that comes also to the fact that so few people vote. Why, what is the best way, especially the Select Board, where you're kind of seen as an overseer of the town in a lot of ways? How can you structure a way to communicate more effectively so that people, A, know that what they're getting is, is true and vetted information and from the actual board itself, and B, to get people to be more involved?
To get people to be more involved. I think it's using all those streams, whether it be sending out, you know, emails for those who only look at emails, whether it be using your social media, whether, if it's something that is, you know, important, people still pick up the phone. So, you know, to use the phone. We're, there's an ability, I think, when there are things that are concerning to individuals, they will receive that information. If it's, if it's, you know, you know, at times, even in the center, you'll see, like, banners, you know, where they're highly trafficked areas, you know, so that, that's something, oh, that's, I, oh, that's happening, okay. You know, maybe that's something I need to check out. For those who have the inability to actually use any type of social media, I mean, that's something that we have to explore. Do we have to go to those places in order to provide those, that information? Whether that be particular centers, like the senior homes or whichever, so that information is disseminated in that way? It can't just be one particular type of, you know, way or system that we are, like, disseminating information. I, I'm beginning to see, at least on the website, I know there were some complaints earlier in terms of the difficulty of using the website, but even in, you know, trying to educate myself more about the town, you know, saw a particular site where there was some information regarding budgets and revenue. And I was very happy to see that, okay, there's a little bit more transparency in terms of what those numbers are and, and how they're, you know, divvied up. So I, you know, they're working towards, there could be a little bit more work in terms of transparency and access to information. That is one of those huge things, access to information. And, you know, that's something that we could actually speak to other, you know, people within the town. How do you receive information?
Yeah, yeah, and ask them.
And ask them, yes, you know. Sometimes we're using the newspaper, but not a whole, there's generations not, not go look at the newspaper.
I know Michelle Braddy does these robocalls to all of her seniors, and it's, she reaches all of them. At least, she leaves a message, you know, and she'll tell what's going on. So, like, to your point, you, you use the method that's going to hit the most, especially your population that you're going after.
Exactly.
But you use the method that's, that's most adequate for that. So let's just finish up this conversation with the board itself, the Select Board itself. Five people, is that enough? Is five people enough?
We are, we are a very large town. With, you know, come understanding the census information towards the end of this year, we're looking at 60,000 to 70,000. I think there was an influx of 1,000 people that I just read within a, within this COVID time. And so it may not be enough. It may not be enough. We have, you know, representatives in terms of town meeting from 15 precincts. And so do we need to evaluate a larger Select Board to adequately serve this town? I don't think that's unreasonable. I, and hopefully, with this year and a half that the Charter Commission has, and receiving all this information from others, maybe that's something that they could, you know, think about as well. Five is a low number.
It's, it's, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of, yes, it's a lot of work.
What you have to know is just, just mind-boggling.
Yeah, so what, you know, with a little bit more hands, what is it? More hands, yes.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Yeah. And the, the other thing you brought up was, you really looked through the website and you saw almost everything that anybody would ever need to know is actually there if you take the time to look for it or watch the meetings.
Oh, watch the meetings, yeah.
Especially FinCom, those, those finance and advisory meetings are very
Detailed and long. Yes, yeah. And a lot of the meetings are, to tell you the truth, when you watch Charter Commission, two hours. When you watch, you know, Planning Board, at least 30 minutes to an hour, FinCom, two hours plus. A lot of these meetings are detailed. It's, it's, it's unfortunate, but the thing is, it's also the time that people have, you know. We, we think about Plymouth, Plymouth is, so the median age for Plymouth is the 40s. And so when I think about that, I think about families. And so, you know, and families are working and raising their kids. And so do you have that allotted time? How can we kind of disseminate this information in little spurts so that people can actually, you know?
That's good. Is there any subject or, or subject matter that we haven't talked about yet that you really wanted to talk about today?
Necessarily, I mean, we talked about taxes. We didn't necessarily speak about some of the platform that I, or some of, not necessarily platform, this is more of a collective, I, what's it called, concerns. We're on public health, and then also regarding, as you mentioned, the open spaces. So, and climate resiliency, so that's another, those are two areas that I'm also looking at.
Why don't you talk about public health for a minute? How do you, how do you think the town of Plymouth has done overall during this whole COVID-19 thing we've been through?
Thing, so.
Ongoing thing, this cloud that we're under?
That everyone's under. Yeah, I think, you know, they've done the best that's, that most could do in this particular situation. In terms of a pandemic that's only existed 100 years before. And so I, I think within the public health structure, there needs to be a little bit more like organis, like, not necessarily organization, but I guess in terms of, like, planning and policy and implementation, and, and broadening the scope of what public health truly is, that goes beyond, you know, sewers and, and other items. I don't know if we have necessarily a centered focus on public health, but certainly this year has shown us that, that human life is invaluable and not being prepared is very, very costly. I think possibly going into the future, looking at more collaborations within particular organizations to kind of come together and actually create, like, some better planning in terms of emergency management. I know that they did, you know, and then also the fact that we're now recognizing the, the importance of data. Yes, and a collection of data. And so I think, and, and with the creation of their advisory board, I think that was a great, you know, a thing for them to do, to start. Some of the work is being done. It can be expanded upon. This was an unusual situation, unfortunately.
Yeah.
This was an unusual situation.
Okay. So in the last, we have about three minutes left, so you can speak to the camera and tell the voters why you think Vedna Haywood should be the candidate that is elected.
Okay. I just want to thank PAC TV for hosting this event and informing the Plymouth residents of the candidates running for the Plymouth Select Board. My name is Vedna Haywood, and I am your fellow resident, neighbor, and civil servant, and I am running for the Plymouth Select Board. I'm a transplant from the state of Florida, and my husband, Jim, and I moved here over a decade ago because he wanted to return to the state he loved so much. He often talked about a childhood where culture of family, friends, and community was paramount, and one he wanted his new family to experience. And having lived in a state where most people were transient, I was ultimately intrigued. We moved to Plymouth on a day trip, where I fell for the seaside charm and ultimately decided to create Roots and raise our family here. Jim and I are raising our young son, who is currently part of the Plymouth School Committee, our school district. We are working, we are the working class of Plymouth. He is in hospitality, and I am a trauma nurse. As a nurse in a critical, in critical care, I am entrusted with making crucial emergency decisions and implementing plans that affect the lives of my patients while navigating through difficult conversations with families and patients I care for. As a current school committee member, I am tasked with making difficult executive decisions from budget to policy that impact our children, families, and the employees I serve. In 25 years as a community servant, I have, and advocate, I have had the opportunity to be part of numerous boards and committees from local to national level, from advocating for education for children to voting rights for adults, from chambers of commerce to state-appointed managed care, from working during epidemics to creating policy and initiatives during a pandemic. My life of volunteerism has allowed me to be a varied, has allowed a varied opportunity to simply serve others. And it is in that spirit of service I am here today to ask you for your vote, to use my experience to broaden my commitment to this community that I fell in love with over a decade ago. We, the collective, who care about Plymouth beyond race and creed, have one thing in common. We love this town, and like thousands of intergenerational residents, we deserve to live in a resilient, sustainable, healthy, and affordable community. And with your vote and collaboration, I will work to make Plymouth not only a thriving, healthy community, but one we know and continue to love. The vision for Plymouth should be forward-looking, objective, and focused on measurable results. Now more than ever, our town is in transition, and it's at a crossroad of change, and it's important that we, as a collective, are present and engaged in this change. So on August 14th, you have a choice. An individual who makes thoughtful and timely, tough and timely decisions and has a widespread commitment to collaboration throughout local government. You have a choice for balanced community representation and not narrow agendas or perceived, or preconceived ideas. Our Select Board needs a fresh approach and more members who are committed Our select board needs a fresh approach and more members who are committed to civility and common sense. So with your vote, it will be a privilege to continue to serve my community on the select board and to serve and represent Plymouth residents fairly. In an authentic and inclusionary way, thank you.
Thank you, Vedna, and thank you for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us, if you're interested in watching replays of this interview, visit our website, pacTV.org/elections. For replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please, make your choices heard by voting in the special election on Saturday, August fourteenth, thank you and good day.
Thank you.